Are you ready?
Good afternoon and welcome to council dot exercise meeting today. As we continue to try to narrow the focus on the remaining ARPA funds and how they could best be utilized in our community, we are down to our final. We will have Mr. Jacoby explain his thinking of how this exercise will work.
Yeah, happy to. So, once again, this is a dot exercise to kind of gauge council members' interest in certain ARPA projects. This is not final action in any way. This gives us a barometer on how council members are feeling across the board on various projects in order to actually come forward with a formal recommendation for reallocation of ARPA funding. Last week or a couple of weeks ago, we did a dot exercise that was about pulling back funding from existing projects. For your reference, that's the big spreadsheet on the right side of the dais here, and that shows, it's kind of small for people in the audience, but it shows the clawback recommendation number as recommended currently by the ARPA work group, and that's around $4.9 million in funding that could come back from existing projects that won't, in their estimation, get out the door in time to spend that money before we'd have to give it back to the feds. So, $4.9 million is the number that we're kind of keeping in mind as we do today's exercise, which looks at potential projects for reallocation. These are priorities given by council members, the mayor, with proposed funding amounts associated with them. The board there right now totals with a couple additions just today, around $10 million, a little over $10 million in proposed funding amounts across new projects. So, the gap that we have there is around $5.5 million between what we can claw back and what we could potentially reallocate toward. So, that brings us to the dots, which are color-coded and numbered for you in front of you. Green is five, yellow is three, blue is one, red is zero. Those are your numbers of interest in pursuing this potential project at the proposed dollar amounts. So, if you are very supportive of planning for public restrooms at $100,000, I would dot it a five. If you're semi-supportive, a three. If you're really erring on the side of not, a one, but maybe there's a sliver of hope you could be convinced. And then, red is, I am not supportive of this project at all. So, you have three of each, three of each of these colors, green, yellow, blue, and red. So, that's your allotted amount across all of the projects there.
Does a three plus one equal a four?
No. Good question. And please limit your dots. Yeah, yeah. So, do not dot a project twice. You're going to choose, if you're going to dot it, you can choose green, yellow, blue, or red. And that's what I know.
Do people make pitches about things?
Yeah, we could walk through each project here. The first three were sponsored by council members who opposed to put on this spreadsheet, but were brought forward by the mayor. And so, I don't know if council members who oppose, you'd like to talk about any of these?
I think we all know that this is the proposal that the mayor's office presented last week.
And Jonathan is online, Councilmember Bingle. Sorry, I just saw your hand. Go ahead.
Hey, I was just going to say, we have a lot more dots than projects then, right?
The mayor took off broadband?
No, you were going to say, we have a lot more dots than projects with three of each color.
Why is broadband not on there?
Yes.
Who made the decision to take it off?
Why is the mayor deciding?
Yeah, but why isn't it on our list? This has been a big one for a while.
Do we have a math problem, Councilmember Bingle, on three? That would be four, eight, 12, 12 dots. I mean, you could leave some dots off. You might have, you know, you might just be not dot yellow or blues.
Yeah, that's all I'm saying is that we got a lot of dots and not as many projects, but I guess it gives us options.
Okay. And you can do this at home, Councilmember Bingle, or I'll send you the spreadsheet and you can mark them up.
All right. Well, let's start with, if you want to make your pitch.
So, the next, first three we heard from the mayor's office, next is planning for public restrooms.
So, I will speak to planning for public restrooms. When ARPA first came out, we, as we continue to hear from our downtown citizens, people are defecating because of lack of public restrooms. The mall closes at 8:00. You cannot get to a bathroom unless you're buying something, and the bathrooms in the parks have not been available. Actually, I've been in communication with the health department. It is a health issue that people have nowhere to use the bathrooms downtown. So, we felt like we should partner and do a study as to the best locations and the best type of public bathrooms that would be available on the east end of town and on the west end of town. And it's not, people just think, well, it's for homeless people to hang out and shoot up drugs. Older people, families, need bathrooms. It is a bodily function, and by us not addressing it, it's not going to make it go away anytime soon. So, we really need to do the study as the city grows, how do we deal with that? And even at that, there's no parks on the west end. There's downtown, and then until you get to Court and Lane Park, there's no bathrooms. And they haven't been open consistently since COVID. So, that's my proposal for the planning process of downtown bathrooms. Councilmember Kat Cart.
Yeah, so the next one is neighborhood lighting investments. And so, this was something I had on my very original cares slash ARPA list. And frankly, it's something that came back up at the council level about eight to 12 months ago as we were talking about investing in some cameras. The idea of better lighting as a SEPTED kind of crime prevention tool was discussed. And so, I think it's really important. I think it's something that we can do internally, obviously working with Avista, but we can do it internally. And so, I think we can get past any of the dates and requirements there.
So, Councilmember Kat Cart, when you say neighborhood light investments, are you, is there a geographic area specifically, or we're talking identified parts of the city?
Certainly, my specific interest is northeast, but no, citywide, making sure the neighborhoods have good lighting that's available because it does reduce the incentivization for criminal activities.
And would that be like expanding existing light posts, or is it envisioning a different type of lighting system?
No, not necessarily a different lighting system, but just expanding the existing overlay of lighting in the neighborhoods. And this is something I hear pretty occasionally from folks frustrated, especially the alleyways in particular, just how dark they are at nighttime, and so, it could be helpful.
Do you know how far that would get with 250,000?
I had, I have the math written down somewhere. I need to go find it, but it's like $20. So, if we don't get a special deal from Avista, it's like $20 per pole, I believe, to rent. And so, you start kind of adding that up and, yeah. And you just prioritize based on where the need is highest and then work on the list.
Well, I'm going to advocate for the childcare center capital project. This is a childcare center that's expanding in the northeast community, non-traditional hours. They have received funding. However, with construction, their costs have gone up. Something came back recently that had to put in a new sewer line from the city. What makes me support this is, we talk about childcare, but we haven't done anything to expand the capacity and nothing to address the non-traditional hours of childcare, especially for working families. I think this would be on a sliding scale for families who do need additional support. So, we know the needs there. We need to grow the capacity. This is a unique opportunity, has lots of support from around the state and other entities. Just the costs have climbed since the first proposal was put out there to fund it, as with all construction costs. Councilmember Kat Cart.
Yeah, I just, and I just thank you for including this. I hadn't considered it because we are looking for some state funding as well as federal funding to help get this off the ground. Unfortunately, the legislature didn't support it in the last round, but we were very hopeful for the next session. And I think 800 would be about a third of the total cost that we're trying to get to help get that childcare center in place, maybe not accounting for some of the smaller dollars that we've accumulated so far, so.
And I will say, I know I talked with Eric Paulson today about this, and I know there is a state at the federal ask, which is great, but federal funds can be two years out. So, that would impact the funding they have received locally if it's not spent in a certain window of time. So, that'd be great if it came on board, but right now, how do we grow childcare, non-traditional hours? Councilmember Bingle.
Yes, thank you so much. And Michael, I just, I don't know if you know this, or Councilmember Kat Cart, this 800,000 is for a very different project, not for the one that you're talking about. It's for a completely separate project. And did we ever find out how much money they had already received, council president? Because again, they have already received a lot of funding, which is why I was not supportive of them getting more ARPA dollars in the past, because I believe that number is in the millions.
I don't have the number here, but I'll get that, Councilmember Bingle. And I don't believe they've received any ARPA funding from us.
No, not, no, no ARPA from us, but they have received, I believe, over $2 million in government funding already for this project. And so, when we're talking about the different projects that we have as a city with such limited dollars, I know that they're about $1 million away from being able to complete their project. And I'm certainly supportive of the non-traditional hours, but at some point, we're fully funding, you know, that project for a specific group, which to me feels like, you know, a bit much for government to be fully funding projects like these. And so, I have a hard time with that one, because again, like I said, my understanding is that they've gotten somewhere in between $2 and $3 million of aid already.
And Councilmember Kat Cart.
Well, I just looking for clarity. I, obviously, this is a project I have no familiarity with, so I need some more details.
Okay, great. And I will push back, Councilmember Bingle, we have funded a lot of government projects. That's almost 100%. So, I guess I will have to challenge you why childcare was different than housing or any other public safety issues, which is a long-term investment. And we have put money into capital. And as the city, I don't know really, I'd get clarity if we've made any investment in this opportunity around this childcare center. Is your hand still up?
Yeah, I took it down and then put it back up. You're right, government has fully funded projects along public safety because that's one of our main responsibilities. And we did put $3 million into childcare previously, I believe, as scholarships and grants from ARPA. And so, yes, there are things that government fully funds as it should, but even with our housing projects, as we're fully funding those, I believe that those are coming from certain pots of money designated for housing. But, yeah, certainly looking forward to the details on how much money they've received from other government entities and other nonprofits.
Thank you, as other entities receive money from other government entities as well. All right, I don't want to belabor that one. On to the Clean and Safe Pilot Program. I think that's yours, Councilmember Bingle.
Yes, thank you. So, this is one that, you know, we've been working on for a little while, but basically just being able to take this out to contract, to work with some organizations to clean up the downtown area. This is one where we've been working with our local 270 union to ensure that they would be on board with us doing, excuse me, doing a program like this. And they have given us their support on this. But basically, what it would do is it would help us on not just the entryways into the city, but downtown and into the neighborhoods, cleaning up the trash and the litter that gets left. And this is something I envision going out to RFP hopefully soon and allowing different organizations throughout the city to put in bids on what it would look like to clean up the city as we have, you know, lots of trash that is just strewn about the city.
Councilmember Kat Cart.
Yeah, I guess I was under the impression this was already being worked on as an RFP, and we were using some of our pass-through grant dollars to fund it, and it was going to come out here in the next month or two. Is that not correct?
There might be a small portion of those dollars where that is being worked on, but it's, it would be a small amount versus this number right here that would be, you know, a million.
And Councilmember Bingle, this being a pilot, as with ARPA, sustainability would just be unknown after the first year of where we would end up with this. So, that's also another consideration.
Yeah, and the idea here is that, you know, depending on, you know, we've looked at some contracts that people have with the valley where it's about a quarter of a million dollars to do not just cleanup, but snow removal, all kinds of stuff in the valley. And so, if it were to cost the city of Spokane half a million, we don't really know. But if it were to cost the city half a million, which is my rough projection, this would, this would fund us for two years, get two years' worth of clean downtown and throughout our neighborhoods.
Any other comment on that? All right, design and engineering for the Cannon Hill Pond lining.
I think this one's me again. Yeah, no, we, on the park board, we've talked about projects that are close, and I know that we're getting down to the wire on being able to get dollars out to contract. And so, I asked Parks to give us some projects that were close. That Cannon Hill Pond lining is one that would do great for us in a number of ways because not only would it help us get that project across the finish line financially, it's also something where I believe we lose, and I think I saw Marlene in there, she can correct me if I'm wrong, but I think it's 30 million gallons of water a year are lost because we don't have that pond lined. So, this would help us in our sustainability goals. It would complete that project. And so, I'm bringing that one forward.
Councilmembers who oppose.
You had a question on that one. Would this project be covered if the Parks levy were to pass? Would it be covered under the expanded levy dollars?
I don't remember if that's in the project list or not. Is Nick or, are Nick or Garrett there?
No.
They would know. Oh, yeah, I don't, I don't know if that one's on the list or not, so I can't say definitively.
So, I will say that we've been talking about this since I've been on council, and I know there has been designated funding yearly from utilities towards this amount. So, I'd be interested in really what's the amount that utilities has to get this project across the finish line. It already has accumulating a designated revenue source going forward. So, I don't know if you were aware of that particular component. So, it'll be interesting to hear where utilities is with this particular project before I vote on it.
Yeah, I believe that utilities has contributed $750,000 to this project. It's a total of a $1.4 million project. Parks has contributed the other amount, you know, that 500,000 or so. And so, it's about 150 shy of being fully funded. And so, if we didn't do this one now, if we didn't add the 150, this, this project would still likely get funding, you know, over the next couple of years to be completed, and it would, it would get done. This just helps it move forward a little bit faster. And again, if we're down to the wire on dollars, this is a good project for us to get done for the city.
Great.
Councilmember Bingle, on that end, did we ever get confirmation on our fallback options? If an RFP comes up short, can we contract out this type of project? I'm looking at Michelle Caleb and team here, if this is a potential project that could be eligible for a fallback.
I thought this, I thought this was a project that was available as a potential fallback, but again, we've discussed a number of them, and so, I could be getting them confused. I don't see Michelle's head shaking, so I feel somewhat okay with that.
For the rest of the council, we have, just, I don't remember how much we've said it, but we've been trying to explore, like, if an RFP comes up short a little bit, what are our options at the end of the year? And basically, it's unbudgeted overtime, sole source, or direct contracts. So, this one, we were talking about, could we do something like that? And this is a potential for that.
And you'll actually find that as we go down. I have another park project on here, but I believe all of these park projects could be ones that are fallbacks. But again, this is where I would need to defer to Michelle and Caleb.
Great. All right, we're going on to new restroom for Camp Sakani Park Trailhead and Beacon Hill.
I think that was pretty self-explanatory, new bathroom at Camp Sakani and the Beacon Hill Trailhead for a quarter of a million, I believe. Again, just helps us get that one done and across the finish line.
I was curious, is that in the city of Spokane or is that in the county?
It's in the county. It's in the city of Spokane. The total park itself goes in between city, park, and city again. It's in a weird sort of area there, but it's definitely a park area that is heavily used by like the Minnehaha neighborhoods and some of the others in that area. But it's, so it abuts to, this, this whole park abuts to like Esmeralda Golf Course.
But the bathroom itself is in the city limits.
I'm, again, almost 100% sure. I would double-check with Nick and Garrett, but I'm, again, almost 100% sure it's in the, in the city limits. It's a city park for sure.
I would need clarity on if it's a city park, but is it in the city limits or in the county? So, that just helped me muddle my way through that one, okay? The next one, we have a northeast park investments and downtown housing study. Councilmember Kat Cart.
Yeah, so, and the question was asked, you know, is this something that's on the levy? Well, we don't have a levy anymore, it sounds like, from what I'm hearing. We are going to give it a dateless date, and who knows when that will happen? Could be November, could be April, could be, God only knows. And it really feels like a giant middle finger to my district. We have some horrific parks right now. And I saw some information this weekend, we're going to get $100,000 and clean up all of our playgrounds. Yay! That's going to do almost nothing. So, I want to see us investing in our parks. This is something that, this opportunity is being taken away from my constituents right now to improve those parks substantially, and I want to make sure that that opportunity, at least to get this going, remains. This could provide, and obviously, this would be based on the strategic plan that's already out there, which is really nice for the public to be able to read, using the prioritization that's already been created and that the Parks Board is working on right now to determine where to invest these dollars in northeast parks. I envision Minnehaha and Harmon being two of those, but I would leave it to the Parks Board to make those priority decisions. And then, the second is a downtown housing study. And just very quickly, at last week's downtown Spokane partnership meeting, there was a big discussion around downtown housing. They want to make a big push to increase density and increase the number of people who are living downtown. And so, part of that requires doing some work on a housing study that would help to illuminate any barriers that may exist, as well as quantifying existing units and needed units and that sort of thing. They believe it could be done for under 50. I said 100 because I know how these things go, but they, they had made the request that we consider this as an ARPA allocation, and so, I agree to put it on the list.
Yeah.
Oh, and then the last one is broadband. Sorry, it's a little hidden at the bottom. I assumed this was still on the list, but it didn't make it on this final draft. And effectively, we are looking at a form of a pilot. It's taken some different versions. Originally, it was potentially a Logan neighborhood pilot. It sounds like that's probably not the case anymore. It's actually potentially a citywide type of investment using existing city infrastructure to create access to broadband. And based on the conversations and the presentations we've seen so far, I believe the number is about 95% of the city for a relatively low cost. And so, this is about half that cost, the idea being that we would go to BroadLink and they would match it. And so, that would allow us to get the investment in place.
Councilmember Bingle.
Was this the project, or was it the projects of citywide significance that we polled because they, DSC told us they had some money in reserve?
Well, citywide significance is what was polled because the DSC could be used as an alternative, but the idea originally at least, and if there's something else out there, it'd be great if Steve could run down here and share it, is that we would use those dollars for our half or for a portion of the broadband pilot cost.
So, is this matching money, this 1.7 mil? I'm trying to figure out what.
Not technically, but the idea is that we would partner with BroadLink to facilitate, because it would also benefit them too. There's some potential opportunities for them to connect with what we're doing to help service the north county where the fires were, and they're right now looking at how to stand up more infrastructure up there, so.
So, Councilmember Kat Cart, I just, not a BroadLink expert. So, with all the funding that's coming in from the federal government that's coming through the state to counties, that amount is still needed to partner with them to get this across the finish line.
There is not, so the challenge, and if Arian was here, she'd be able to say this much better than I, but the challenge is, a lot of those dollars are not specifically allocated for urban areas. They're really for more rural. And so, a lot of the money that's going in is going to be for the smaller cities and the unincorporated areas to build out there, which is the rural priority. And so, there's not much currently that's coming direct to cities. I think long-term, the plan is that there will be some, but immediately, there's not.
Any other commentary before I cut you loose with your dots?
Did Jacoby tell us the total dollar amount that was recommended for? Did Jacobi tell us the total dollar amount that was recommended for pullback? I can't remember.
4.9.
4.9. And that's the list of the pullback, based on the previous dot exercise with the committee met and how the dollars are all shaking out?
And in my, I just sent everybody an updated spreadsheet that includes the additions just added today, and there's 12.3 million dollars now in that potential project list for reallocation.
Okay.
And before we go any further, we've all had some questions about just clarity on the CAT relocation and why that's not an RFP. I know Jason's sitting out there because we thought.
I'd love to hear from him.
Yeah. We think.
We're confused.
Yeah, we're confused. Is it an RFP? Is it direct allocation? Is it sole source? What, how would that play itself out?
It's, it's going to ultimately depend on, on the final method that we approach. So Michelle and I chatted a little bit. So there's one path that we could go down, the NOFA RFP, and that would be a grant award, and then that would follow under the policies.
Jason, could you just get up?
Sure. Yeah, is that better? Yeah, okay. So one option is that we do this as a NOFA RFP, so this would be a grant award and then would follow all the normal grant award rules that are associated with that. Another option that was talked about was potentially buying property, which would then go through the procurement process for buying it. So there's, there's a couple of different ways in which we would flush that out. I'm not sure if those fine details have, have fully been laid out at this particular point in time as far as which of the, there's at least three major paths that we can potentially pursue, and there may be other versions as well.
And I'm not like, I'm opposed, but we have never upfront specifically called out where money is going without kind of going through process. Councilmember McCackhart?
Well, and I guess I wonder, I mean, I, I understand the idea is that these services and where they're located is, is an impact and, and that's why we want to move them. Although I don't, in one of these cases, I really don't think it will change anything on the ground, but that's just my opinion. But what I'm wondering is theoretically, there are other providers that could compete for providing these services. VOA would be just one example. It's already downtown. They've got a footprint there. And so to, to say that we could do this without an RFP, I, I think would be a disservice to a lot of providers. And so I'm just wondering, how, how do you justify ultimately not going down that RFP path?
I don't think at this time that we're not going down an RFP path. So like I said, there's, some of it has to do with how we're ultimately deciding how that project's going to manifest. So at least from my standpoint, and my recommendation was that we pull the money together for downtown services. The two largest providers, as I understand it, are CAT and House of Charity. If there's extra money left over for other providers, that may be an option. So it kind of really depends on how we finalize what that approach is, how much money is actually needed. So as, as I understand it, it's still relatively broad.
So that, there was a meeting, I wasn't in it, but there was a meeting earlier with the administration, and it's their point of view that there will be no RFP. Is that not correct?
Well, I, I will just comment, I think the conversation has been around partnering with the row funding and how we stack those funds to make this possible to our gateway. So I think we're headed that direction with still my few potholes left as to how we get to the other side. So I, I think, I think the funding source, where it comes from, how it plays well together is playing a part in some of these decision-making processes. Councilmember Bingo?
Yes, this is not about that. And so if we wanted to keep talking about that, I got a response from Garrett on the Secani stuff.
Okay.
Do you want to hear that now?
Yeah, yes, go ahead while we got you on the line.
Okay. So he said that Secani is outside of the city limits, but city-owned and operated and is a part of a larger investment at Camp Secani and Shields totaling $3 million that would be bid later this year. The restroom unfortunately was outside the budget, but a high need.
So he said it's outside the city limits?
Yep, the, the park itself is outside of the city limits, but it's city-owned and operated. So it's a city park just outside. Like I said, this is a weird section there, that whole beacon complex, some of it is in the city, some of it is out of the city. But it is a city-owned and operated park.
Councilmember McCackhart?
Yeah, I guess I would just say, I mean, it's our park, but I would, I'm a little challenged to understand, I don't, I'm not on the park board, but I'm a little challenged to understand how we're prioritizing 3 million in spending for two parks that aren't in the city at a time when we can't afford to maintain the rest of the parks that are well within the city.
All right. Thank you, Jason, Michelle. I'm sure we'll hear more. Any other commentary or comments or questions before we go forward? Any clarity? Okay, Mr. Burr, tell us once again our process.
Yep, so you have three of each of the dots. As Councilmember Bingo pointed out, you have more dots than there are projects up there, so you will leave some on your sheet. Please don't dot a project more than once, but you can choose to prioritize it. Five, which is high priority, you would want that project to move forward at the proposed funding amount. Three may be supportive, but need some additional work on it. One, not, probably not a shot that you're going to be supportive of it, but maybe there's one thing that could change that would change your mind. And then, and then red is not supportive at all. One dot per project. Dot away.
Dot.
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 She loves dots.
Not, not necessarily.
You've told me.
I love giving other people dots. I don't like that.
Are we, what, what are we doing when we're done? Are we just?
Yeah, we're going to dot and then we're done.
Dot and then close out the meeting.
My daughter's a ballet teacher, but she was that one.
She calls me every other day.
Who's that?
My daughter's ballet teacher is right across from Kevin.
Oh, yes.
Since my daughter was three, seven years.
They got me.
Who had numbers on their dots?
Oh, you do?
On the top row. And depending on how long, it's also.
I see it.
Now you see it.
Depending on how long we had to get ready.
I'm so confused about that one.
I am too, and that's what's frustrating.
I could swear they had other money for that, and that's why we took it off.
Yeah, I don't, I don't know. The goal is to get some money for running, but unless there's another one, I'm not aware.
That's how it got rolled into the projects of citywide.
And I, I think they're supposed to be using that same fund that they're going to use for, because they have 12 million in that fund. And so projects of citywide cities and that could be.
You mean in the DSC fund they have put on?
Yeah.
Did I put one there or not?
I could be.
Well, that's still enough.
I don't want to give another.
I think there's more money out there, Mike, than what we.
I hope so.
I, I keep hearing different conversations around money for broadband and equity.
I just talked to Steve last week.
Right.
It sounded like there's still.
I didn't double that.
Forgot what I did.
Watch briefly.
You're going to go, you're going to go put them up?
Yeah.
I got to tell you, criminal justice is a tough one because.
Where's the criminal justice?
I don't really know what that is.
Well, it's municipal court.
So just funding municipal court?
Well, because it's running on grant money now.
It's half a million dollars.
But this is a one-time.
It's one-time, yeah.
What I heard is that we don't.
Councilmember Bingo?
For the half of this year of 2024 and not full year.
Okay.
And so this would get them the funding for the remainder part of the year.
Execute it.
In theory, the levy would go over.
Yeah, he's gone there.
I think these are all the services that they're doing out at, sorry, to track right now, stuff like that.
Well, the one where the pilot, we're doing a track was like 15 grand for the pilot. So I don't know what all.
It would be a lot of money.
Yeah, but maybe they're expanding. I don't know.
Jacobi, after adding those projects, it ended up being a perfect number.
What'd you say, Councilmember Bingo?
After adding those last few projects, it ended up being a perfect number for the amount of dots we got.
Oh, great. Unintentional.
I think we should do that as part of the comp.
Could be. That's an option.
Contract coming up. It's a DSP contract coming up. We should write that to them.
Well, we approved it two Decembers ago, and I was at a four-year, five-year?
I would like.
Jacobi, I remember.
What was that?
The DS, the contract.
Oh, yeah. Oh, when was that? That was like 2021.
Was it? It's a five-year or four-year?
I think it's a five.
What if there's opportunities to improve it? Probably started discussions.
Wait, I think I put a red on it. Crap. I put a red on all the parks ones because I'm confused.
You don't really pay attention to the tracks.
Yes. Because I'm confused about whether they're in the levy or not.
They're not in the levy if the levy doesn't go forward.
Well, the levy's not passing. There is no way.
So a lot of people think.
I can't even get line items specific.
I think it might be this one that I haven't done.
If the count's office me, I can tell you that right now.
Everyone's going to know we screwed up.
I can tear off the sticker.
Yes.
I think I've.
Yes.
It's like seven.
Two.
I haven't, no, but I was going to say.
Number seven.
He gave it to Garrett.
Yes.
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 Yes.